Does it indicate that he was trying, because I can call him on my phone?
He's trying right now, I understand. Here he comes. We now have Nelson.
Great.
Nelson has landed.
Hello, Nelson. Nelson, can you read? Copy.
Can you see me? You hear me?
Yeah, okay, good, good. All right, I'm gonna get the mayor to begin the meeting.
All we are recording.
No, I think that's John.
Let's call this meeting ordered. This meeting is improperly advertised and voted in accordance with Public Hall 75, Chapter 231, run it and advertise in the Daily Journal, and voted in City Hall. Keep watch for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the government for which we stand. One nation under God, under the law, liberty and justice for all. If you remain standing, unfortunately this month is not a busy month. We've got three very good residents of our community that have fled. Recently, we had Mr. Battistini. We had Kevin Weeks, who was a really nice guy, I've met him a couple times. And we had a very longtime resident, Mrs. Nipolosi. We keep them in our prayers. Also, we'd like to keep our president and first lady in our prayers to have a speedy recovery. And for anybody else who's been affected by any disasters that have been going on. Mr. Moore, could I have a local piece?
Yes, Mr. Dilch?
Here.
Mr. Olson?
Here.
Ms. Owens?
Here.
Ms. Sparks?
Here.
Mayor Benethia?
Present. At this time of the meeting, if I make a motion, the meeting should be open to the public. You have three minutes, you can only be meaning to fund the agenda. Make the necessary motions, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Meeting is now open to the public. Is there anyone from the public? Hearing none, can I make a motion to all close the public portion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Yeah, hold on. Mayor, hold on for a minute, Mr. Poe noted that everyone is muted.
No, that was before. That was before.
What's that, please?
That was... That was at the very beginning, so we're fine now.
Is there anybody from the public who has anything to bring up?
Uh, yes.
Sounds like Judy, Councilman Grant?
That's me.
I recognize your voice. How are you, Judy?
Uh, okay, thanks, how are you?
I'm doing well. What do you have pertaining to our agenda?
Well, I haven't seen the agenda, I guess it's at a different place than where I was looking. It used to be under mayor and council, and then you could go to that... You would find it under the general code. But I couldn't find it this time, so I don't know whether what I want to say is on the agenda or whether I need to wait for another time. But I wanted to talk about the codes.
You want to talk about the codes?
Yes, it's an update.
That's really not on the agenda at this moment, you could certainly, if you can hang with us, hopefully we'll have our meeting done within forty-five minutes or so, and we'll... Talk about the codes and anything else.
Yeah, I was hoping it was always gonna be under old business, so that's why I was asking. Okay, thank you.
On our own business, yeah. Yes, alright. Anyone else from the public? Going once? Going twice? I make a motion to close the public?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Do we have the engineer's report? Michael, are you with us?
Hey, yes, I am. Actually, this is my wife's phone, the Wayne method's still going on, so I'm trying to do both right now. City Hall, the improvements have been completed, I got a proposal for the work for the lighting fixture, and it looks good, and I'm waiting for the contractor to get back to me to fix the lighting. Twelfth Avenue and Beach, that's been completed, I received the city's packet today, will be forwarding it out into the state for final closeout. Fifth Avenue, I received the Pine Lands application signed by the city, and it was good, just completed the stormwater report, gonna be submitting that to Pine Lands. And then lastly, the application for Maple Avenue has been submitted to the DOT, and we should be hearing that by the end of November.
Alright. I don't have, actually, your engineer's report, Michael, so I make everything that you're saying is accurate. Is there anything else that's on the horizon? Have you heard anything about monies that will be available for DOT funding?
I have not heard anything on that, no direction in the way, but based upon the new statute that was passed, we're supposed to have an answer from DOT by the end of November.
Alright, and also, we see that there's a demand, which I don't think actually pertains, that's no matter, but if there are any discretionary relief for any areas that have been affected, such as bridges, railroads, or whatever, are you aware of that letter that went out? Mike, and what's how that would apply, that's no matter, or are we just not really part of that?
Yeah, it's a really competitive program. I reviewed that, there's not a lot of funding in place for that program. I believe they announce it every two years, and I believe in our immediate area, there was only two grant recipients two years ago. So, it really pertains to downtown landscaping and commuter areas, for the most part, for the projects that were awarded. So, I don't know if that project or grant opportunity would particularly pertain to, spell matter.
Wasn't there another letter that we received from the DOT indicating transportation for... I guess probably for railroad? Any areas?
That's the letter I'm referring to, unless there's an additional one, yes.
Michael, what this was, it came out on sometime this past month, and Michael Ray didn't give his title, but New Jersey DOT completing the statewide evaluation of roads and bridges as a result of emergency events in order to meet a new federal requirement.
I did not see this letter. If you could forward it to me, I could... Okay. I didn't...
I'll forward it to you.
Okay.
Well, it just said if it's repeatedly repaired or reconstructed as a result of an emergency event in order to meet a new federal requirement. So, bridges are handled by the county, and I don't know of any emergencies that affected our roadways, so...
Yeah, unless there was an underdrain or a culvert washout, or something that effect.
Right, right.
Possibly apply.
We also got a call from Pine Lands today about a check that we sent, and that's in regards to Fifth Avenue, Mr. Mallon said something about that, or talked to him. So, could you follow up with him?
Sure.
I think it was the check that we sent last month.
Right. I'll call Mr. Mallon?
Yeah, well, he's our deputy clerk, he's the one who took the call.
Oh, okay. I'll reach out to him tomorrow.
Okay, and just find out, if that's... Trying to figure out what to do with it.
Okay.
Alright, I guess that's it, then, Michael. If you have anything else, let us know, if not, you're... There you go.
Alright, have a good evening, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you.
Next, we move down to the bill list. Everybody has all had a chance to take a look at the bill list. I, um... I've got a question here, as a matter of fact, it's not necessarily given a question, but conflict public defender. We voted at the reorganization meeting to have a conflict public defender, and why would that conflict public defender not use for a court? Does anybody know that answer? Nobody knows that answer? I mean, I'm not comfortable paying somebody, and then, you know, we've got someone that we've already made a resolution at our reorganization, and oh, by the way, we didn't call you. I think that's highly, highly unprofessional. I'd like to be able to hold that check until we find out if the other person was just not even available that night, then I may understand.
But Mayor, the person performed the service under the direction of the court, so I think you gotta pay it.
Well, the council also unanimously supported a deputy conflict, but not a deputy, we appointed a conflict.
Okay, but there must have been some lack of communication between the reorg and letting the court personnel know, but this person has done it before, but I'm just telling you, he did the service, I got the voucher, so we're obligated to pay him. And then I think we need to get straightened out with the court, just a suggestion, that's all.
I'm not comfortable paying.
Well, okay.
We have on the bill list also the Dega municipalities, I'm not going to be able to attend. The check is made, but if you're ready to check, I'm not gonna be able to attend.
No, maybe somebody else will, we already registered, so... But what it is, it's a call-in, it's to do the seminars and all, they're not even having...
I understand, still on this, I'm not gonna be able to go in on a few, but I'm just here for class.
Okay.
That's gonna be the week that I'm leaving, so I don't wanna really recognize that. It's just gonna be a difficult situation for me to be able to keep things going.
I make a motion to pay the bills at $281,212.60.
I'll second, just to keep the conversation moving, we also have here $504 for the historic Grizzly School. How do they have such a high bill if the building hasn't even been opened? Does anybody know? I mean, $504 is quite steep. I can assure you, me living in my house, I haven't used that much electric in six months.
Must be several years.
Absolutely assure you.
It may have been combined with another... It sounds like it was just a combined, I just picked up what the first item was on the bill, I can take a look at it, but it is a valid bill, but...
I'm not saying it's not valid, I'm saying how could it be possible that that building itself... That's the issue. Alright, so, vocal.
Yes, Mr. Dilch?
I have a question, so Mrs. Owen, your total there, is that included $250 that the mayor's disputing, or excluded?
Okay, uh...
Did anybody hear me?
That's including, I just lost my...
Yeah, that's including, that's the total amount.
Okay. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Sparks?
Yes.
Mayor Benethia?
Yes, with the exception of line item 0427, I'm ready to go.
So, Mr. Mayor, my question is, whose job is it to find out those questions, the answers to that you wanted?
I have already spoken with the court in the beginning of the year, and I told them that... As a matter of fact, the court is aware, when we do our reorganization, they know who are the appointees. So, it's not like it's a second guess here, they know who the appointees are. And I'm really curious to know why Mr. Tappel came in.
So, my question is, who is going to find that answer? Are you going to find that answer out and report to us about it?
Is that what you're asking me to do, because I will.
I just wanna know who's responsible for it, I mean, yeah, sure, you can do it, if that's what you wanna do.
Yeah, I will.
Okay.
I mean, Mayor, it makes sense, I mean, it makes the most sense, all the things being what makes the most sense, that you would pursue it for your own satisfaction. It is your stated concern after all, so chase it down and let us, I mean, in friendly, in the friendliest of terms, chase it down and let us know. Sound good?
I will.
Cool.
I will, and I will speak to anyone on the side as to what my contentions are with this particular question. Moving on down the line here, we have meeting minutes.
The September 10th is the special meeting, I put regular meeting.
Anybody have, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the... To approve the minutes for September the 2nd and September the 10th, is there a second?
Second.
Alright, does anybody have any corrections, additions, or clarifications pertaining to the minutes?
On the special meeting, I have to put in there, we talked about times, when the new person was gonna be available, and for some reason, I left that out, so I'm just gonna modify that section of the special meeting to include that. Sorry about that.
One of the things that I will say, after we had our meeting the last month, I did speak to the fire chief and emergency management, and they made it clear, yes, there was definitely some hangups with reception. They got a couple calls out, they got a lot of calls, and did come go out, they were having problems with the phone when we had the hurricane last, back in August, I think it was August the 4th, so yes, I was correct. There were a number of us that had some hiccups in our phone reception.
We just need to... Let's see who's voting in favor of the minutes. Oh, okay.
So, there's a motion, there's a second. Anybody have any further questions about the minutes? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, moving on down the line, we have...
I do remember.
We have correspondence, I think we kind of already touched base on that. Number one, this will be from Michael Ray. Number two, the public hearing, the open space recreation farmland historic preservation trust by the Atlantic County. Actually, normally, the procedure that the county would like, and Randy, we may need to have your assistance with this, but normally, when the county purchases property, they want all the municipalities to be aware, and to support the resolution, so that there's no... How do I say? Not animosities, but so that we're all on board, that we approve what they're doing. Not that it's really gonna stop them, but just so that we're aware that they're purchasing this property. So, Randy, we have, we could probably do this through a resolution, and that would be on resolution number 73.
Mayor, just on there, this is property and having township, correct?
That's correct. It's a significant amount of money, if anybody saw how much they're spending, but it's over a million dollars. I did look into it, I know where the property is that they're buying, and apparently, there's some issues with, out there by the airport. It's a sparrow, grass sparrow, whatever it's called, it's endangered, and the land over there by the airport has been disturbed, so therefore, they're looking to have a site so that way there, these grass sparrows will have a place to be able to habitat without without being able to be disturbed. So, the one figure that we have here is $1,700,000, and then there's also an additional $125,000 to be added on to that, which would be a total of $1,825,000. I really don't know what the additional $125,000 is, but I do know about the $1.7 million, so this is what the county's looking to purchase.
Well, Mayor, since this is only an action in support of county action, you only need a resolution, nothing else.
You don't need a resolution, or we do?
We do need a resolution, if we want to take official action, but you don't need to do anything other than a resolution.
That's correct, Randy, that's exactly correct, that's what I'm saying, we'll probably need to do a resolution on this one here, which would be the third resolution for the night. Is council in agreeance that you would like to have a resolution to support the county to purchase this property?
Why are we doing, is it required that we take a position one way or the other? Or is it not?
I already explained that, Mr. Dilch, the reason why is the county just wants to be sure that the municipalities are in support of how they are spending our money.
As far as I'm concerned, if at a million eight, they should have come out and seen this thing. I don't know enough about it, I'll abstain, because I don't know enough about it. Vote yea or nay? I have no authority anyway, it seems like a silly exercise to me, I don't mean to deface the process, but it just doesn't make any, why would I vote something I have no authority over and don't know anything about?
Knowing how the county operates, I think they're gonna do it anyway, but, you know, if you have one or two towns that are opposed to it, that's one thing, but if you have, in fact, actually, a number of towns that are adamantly opposed to it, then they may take a second consideration of it.
We're not giving too much time for that, I'm concerned.
The way I understand it, Mayor, is that if the county doesn't hear from you, they assume that you take no position where you support it.
Rather than doing a resolution, Randy, can we just simply do a motion and a second, and...
Do a motion, authorize the mayor to send a letter that you take no position relative to this acquisition? Is that what you wanna do?
No, 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 we're saying, could we tonight, just simply do a motion to support this, without doing it through a resolution?
If that's council's pleasure is, you can do it by motion, to direct, authorize the mayor to issue a letter to the county supporting it, that's what this council's pleasure is.
So, I'll make the necessary motion, is there a second? Is there a second? Can everyone hear me?
I can hear you.
So, there's no second?
Did we get anything else on this? All it says is they're changing a meeting date.
Is that Matt?
Yeah.
Olson, we have a letter here that is from the county, we all received in our package.
Yeah, I'm looking at it right now.
Yeah.
There's not a lot of information in it.
Well, it's got the lot and block number, actually, right off of the alone bridge.
Total $1.8 million.
Well, to say the 222 acres of land that made landing not only knows what it's worth, it's subdivisible, which it is, I mean, they could put a lot of housing in there, so it probably really doesn't hurt. Maybe even more, I don't know. I made a necessary motion, if there's not a second, then let this thing die on the vine. Okay. Moving down the line here, we have some other correspondence, item number three. We got a letter from Barbara, excuse me, from Michael and Barbara Gonzalez, who purchased some properties. There are six or seven of them, I saw two different items here, and I'm not really sure what it is. I do know that they are correspondence that I did see. Mr. Mancini wrote on here, lots 278 to 284, located on a paper street, on Washington Sixth Street. The city has them assessed to 25 by 100. They are assessed at $500 each. My personal opinion is, we can make a decision what we want to sell them for. I think $500 is a very far stretch, personally, guys, I really do. Last time, they bought two or three lots in the past, and they did attract pay $100 a lot. They didn't have the money to purchase the additional pieces. We have a couple things that we could discuss, one of them would be, we need to be sure that whatever we're gonna do, that the, at least the solicitor, bill would be paid, rather than us, you know, purchasing, them purchasing the property, and then we gotta pay the legal expense on it, where it's costing us money. As long as we can get paid for that, and then we get it back on the backside. Mr. Lafferty, if I may ask, could you give a rough idea of what you think of the property?
That's not really the issue, the issue is, to sell a public asset, if it's not to a continuous property owner, then it has to be a public auction. That's the process.
These are contiguous, Randy, they're contiguous.
Okay, I don't know, I don't, the letter was not in the package that I got, but, so this is a continuous property owner?
Yes, it butts right up to their property, they're the only ones that are affected by this property, so they wanna add it on to their current deed, and, I mean, I think that there's also some issues of motorcycles, dirt bikes going back there at a high rate of speed, so I think they may be able to control that a little better. If somebody was to get hurt on that property, and we own it, we would be liable. Somebody gets hurt on that property, and he owns it, I would imagine we're off the hook for the most part.
There's no other continuous property owner for these seven lots?
No, not that I'm, as a matter of fact, he's the only house that's back there. He's way back in the woods, he's probably one of these DeCarlo lots, homes that got put back there a long, long time ago.
His property totally surrounds all of these seven lots?
Those lots bought right up to his, and I think that there are a number of...
Mayor.
Yes.
Um, the question is this, does his property totally surround these seven lots?
There's a municipal street that cuts through there, Mr. Lafferty, called Sixth Street, he lives on Fifth Street, one of the two, according to this math.
I think we need, if we put it in shorter language, Mayor, I would say that the solicitor's cast enough doubt on the robustness of our own position in not advertising publicly, that we should probably have a document from somebody who really knows, and not to say that we don't know anything, but somebody who really knows, like the tax assessor, or the tax collector, or the solicitor, or the city engineer, that says that the only shared property lines on, with those seven lots, are the Gonzalas', there are no other shared property.
Okay, so, how about this?
Otherwise, we gotta advertise it, is that right, Mr. Solicitor?
How about this, can you give me 30 seconds, I'll go next door, I asked Mr. Mancini to tell us if there are any other contiguous landowners, and if there are not, then we can make a decision tonight, rather than delaying it another month. Just give me 30 seconds to a minute, okay? I'll be right back.
Are you alright with that, Mr. Lafferty?
Well, listen, here's the law, the law is, if there's more than two contiguous property owners, you have to go out to public bidding. If there are two contiguous property owners, you can have a private sale by bid to those two property owners. Can be accepted, doesn't have to be accepted, it can be accepted by the governing body. That's the law.
Did the mayor say that each of these lots is 25 by 100 square, by 100 feet?
I have no information on any of this, so I don't know what these lots are.
I thought that was 35 by 75.
100 by 75?
No, I thought he said 25...
Yeah, I thought he said 25 by 75.
25 by 100.
25 by 100, okay. The 25 by square feet a lot, it's 17.5 for the seven lots? That's getting out half an acre, not too far from it. Which is not much more than a leach field, that's don't matter.